Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to call the regular board meeting of Fire Commissioners for Benita Springs Fire Wednesday, December 1st, 2021 to order. Please rise.
I'd like to have a moment of silence in honor of those firemen who have lost their lives this past month, twelve altogether. And then we'll have a prayer. Dear God, as we give thanks for those that have so heroically sacrificed themselves for others, we thank you for them. We thank you for their commitment. I pray that you be with the families, Lord, that experience this loss, that you'll watch over them and give them strength. Lord, we pray for protection for our firefighters here in Benita and the surrounding areas. Always watch over them and give them protection. Thank you for their service and their commitment and their sacrifice for others. Thank you for the freedom to meet and the ability to share and just do things in freedom in this country. Thank you for those that protect it for us. It's in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited and testable.
Any public comments on agenda items this evening? Seeing none, I need a motion for the approval of the November 8th, 2021 regular meeting minutes.
So moved.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. One motion for the November 2021 and current expenditures and ACH payments, the acknowledgement of financial report, the acknowledgement of wire transfers and transfers between accounts.
So moved.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Next item, Commissioner's business. Anybody would like to say anything? Anybody have anything they want to talk about?
I was going to ask the chief if the vehicles were given away already.
Yes, the town of Alfred and Delwood Fire Department came down two Fridays ago and picked them both up and took them back. I got confirmation that they made it back there and they are ecstatic. I think we made a large difference in those two fire departments' lives.
Well, that's good.
And the citizens. One of them was, one of the fire departments that came down says they cover about 900 square miles. And they're doing it with like a 1983 truck they got.
They need a helicopter, dude.
Thank you. That makes us feel good.
Yeah, no, they did. They're a good thing.
No, I'm happy that we did that. For the little bit of money we would have gotten out of that, that was, that was great. Anybody else have anything?
Just to remind everybody about the Christmas holiday party in the park on the 7th. At four o'clock, 4:30 to 7, I believe.
Okay. Okay, next item on the list is presentations. Chief?
First presentation we have is for our administrative assistant Sarah Getz. As when she first started here, Sarah McDonald, but it's been quite a year for her as we can see. She's gotten married and she's got a little guy on the way. We all are taking bets now on when she's due. So next time you see her, she won't be like she is right now. She'll have another one on the side of her. So it's been quite a year for Sarah. She's done a great job. She's, you know, come in here with no, no, no real experience. Like her father was a fire chief, but no real fire experience. She's taken to it real well. She's our main person. She's the first person everybody sees when they walk in the door and everybody's complimented her on that, complimented the district on, on her representation of the district. So she's done a fabulous job, so I'd like to congratulate her on one year. Next, I'll turn it over to Deputy Chief Madden.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I want to welcome Mr. and Mrs. Trout. Cynthia Trout is the reason that we're having this Phoenix Award presentation. It's always a pleasure for us to meet people who we're able to help, who we're able to save. So it's an honor. It's good for us. Normally for us, we put somebody in the back of an ambulance. We don't get to see them again. So we don't get a lot of closure. So this is really good closure for us. It makes us feel good. We get to see how it affects you, how it affects your family. So we give out a Phoenix Award, Phoenix representing rising from the ashes, as you did. And I just learned actually, as Mrs. Trout got here, this is Mrs. Trout's second cardiac arrest. So she's twice lucky. Twice lucky. So we were dispatched to Mrs. Trout's home. She was swimming all day, came in, sat down, and started not to be able to breathe. So we got called in for a shortness of breath. Our crews got there and Mrs. Trout wasn't doing very well. She was agonal, which means she was breathing very shallow and very slow. They brought her on the floor and Mrs. Trout went into cardiac arrest. Our crews went to work. We started our pit crew model. We started an IO in her shoulder. An IO is intraosseous. It's just a big needle that goes in your shoulder. That means we can have IV access. We controlled her airway. We put her on the monitor. She was in a systole, which is flat line. So then our crews started our CPR. We started giving meds and we started to go to work. She went into PEA, which means it's a pulseless electrical activity current in your, in your conduction system that's not capturing your heart. It's not making your heartbeat. And then she went into ventricular tachycardia, which means your ventricles are beating too fast to move any blood. So they were dealing with a lot of stuff. And they were, you know, bringing you back and forth and then out of these rhythms. And they were actually able to stabilize you with the normal sinus rhythm. And then they secured that and they stabilized that and they got you down to Physicians Regional where two weeks later, fortunately, you were able to walk out. So we're going to bring them up one at a time and then you can come up and say your congratulations and your thank you if you, if you'd like. First of all, we have Lieutenant Ernie Williams. You're going to come up, guys. You're going to stay up here, okay? Firefighter Nicholas Kemmer. Acting Lieutenant Calvin Payne. Congratulations, guys.
Thank you for being there that day. Thank you. I'm alive. I'm alive because of these guys. It was my second heart attack here in Florida. Jack and I are from St. Louis. We are snowbirds. We became snowbirds three years ago when Jack and I retired. My husband's 41 years with the fire department. And my two heart attacks, I was dead. And I had my husband right by my side. I would not be here today if I didn't have him, these guys, and the, and the fire department in St. Louis. So it's all good. I'm very thankful every day that I wake up that night. My doctor told me that a woman my age, I'm 65, a woman my age, having two life event, death events that I had, 3% women survived that. So I'm a 3 percenter. Thank you so much.
I'd like to take a quick minute to thank these guys also. I mean, I was at a total loss of what to do, so on and so forth. And this fellow goes, we're only going to take her to one hospital and one only.
Because we didn't really know where.
We didn't know where to go. But I, I can tell you this, is that you're forever in her thoughts and prayers. Now, she had a triple bypass here to put four stents in her in St. Louis. And we fired that cardiologist, obviously, too. So, but the point is, without you guys, she wouldn't be here. And I was in this service long enough, and I think as Chief was saying, nobody ever comes back and says, hey, thank you, you know? And we felt it was so important that we do. Because I know my guys had got all bummed out going, oh man, nobody ever comes by and says, you know, did they squat? But you guys are wonderful. And deep gratitudes to you. The chief, be proud of them.
Yeah.
We are.
Thank you.
That's a hard act to follow.
Yeah. I think we just close it up. Close the meeting now.
I will take a brief recess here. If anybody wants to leave, not stay for the rest of the meeting, that we're here for the awards. You're welcome to stay, but if you'd like to leave, we'll take a short break. God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you guys for having us. Great fire department there.
Well, you are the recipient of the best-trained individuals here. Anyway.
Yep, that's what it's all about.
Thanks, guys.
You're very welcome. I guess we can come back to order for the rest of the remaining crowd. We need a, a motion for the disposal report?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Old business. Anything?
Not that I can recall.
A 98-year-old guy is being all taken care of.
Good. That's the last word I got. Is he still?
He's at the terraces now.
Oh, he is here? Okay.
He's been transferred down.
Good.
And we helped facilitate that.
All's well that ends well.
Yep.
New business. We need a motion to approve the new organizational chart that's in your package. There was only a couple of minor changes on it.
I was unable to be prepared for this meeting today because I haven't been getting my electronic messages.
Okay.
So I'll just stay out of this.
It's actually in the pack. If you want to take a fast look at it.
And I can give a brief overview if you'd like, sir.
Yeah, okay. That'd be the best thing.
I'll, I'll look it over. I just don't want to make the motion or second. I'll make that motion.
Go ahead and second. We'll have some discussion on it.
Yeah, basically what it was is the organizational chart changed a little bit. Instead of the administrative finance director reporting to Assistant Chief or the, and then having the HR coordinator report to the administrative director, they both are going to report to me along with the director of finance, which is Mr. Kaufman. They, those three are going to report to me. The only other minor change was one of our administrative assistants who is permanently assigned to prevention. Instead of having them report to the administrative finance director, they're going to, she is going to report to, or that person is going to report to the assistant fire marshal. It just didn't make much sense for that person to ask, in this case, Lisa, hey, can I have the day off? And then she have to go back and ask the fire marshal, assistant fire marshal, is everything okay? Can she take the day off?
Sure.
So those were the changes as far as the administrative finance director reporting to me because of budgetary reasons and for audits and all that. Just made more sense for her to report right to me rather than to go through the assistant chief and the assistant chief come back to me. Same thing with HR. She's going to be part of the, for the confidentiality and the physicals and for negotiations. That way she reports directly to me. Not say the assistant chief is not going to be, he's going to be intimately involved in it. He is still the second in charge. If I am in my absence, they are to report to him. But if, but if they need something right away, that's what the basic the changes are.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item is the motion to accept the proposal from 10-8 for the new Pierce pumper truck. If we get it, somebody make a motion in a second and we'll have discussion on that.
I'll make, make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. I'm going to throw it to you, chief.
Yeah, what this is, is we budgeted for this truck at the beginning of the budget, the budget year. It came in a little higher than what we liked, but we did make some changes on it. And the changes that we did make, they did not charge us for. So basically, we had budgeted $600,000 for the, the new pumper to replace engine 21, who, which is in 2009. So it's 12 years. By the time this truck comes in, it's going to be over 12 years old. The reason why we're doing it a little earlier than we'd like to is we've got told for two reasons. One, in February, the price is going to go up anywhere from eight to nine percent because of supply chains and, and so on and so forth. And the other thing, the other reason is, is now, when we first started looking at this back when we budgeted, it was a eight to 10-month build time. Now it's, we're getting a guarantee of 12 to 13 months because this is a truck that we'd built before. If this is a brand-new truck that we'd never built before, it would be about a 16 to 18-month build time. So we want to get it on, on the books, get it going now. And that's not to say that they, if they run into a supply, a supply problem, that it won't bump it out. But we need to get it now, sooner than later.
But having looked over the proposal, we got a, we're getting a significant, I want to say over $19,000 prepayment.
$19,005. And also, they're allowing us two trips up there to do the post and a print review or a mid, mid-build and a final.
And it can save, it'll save anywhere from like, it was seven, eight, or nine percent. They're not sure exactly what the increase is going to be, but they know it's going to be. It's not going to be the normal 3% that they bump up every year.
It was one of those things when we talked to the salesman, he says, it's going to be seven to nine percent. I think we're going to charge nine, but if, if the parts and the supply chain holds, we'll only charge you the seven.
Yeah, right.
So.
I got a bridge I'll sell you, too.
Chief, the 2009 vehicle, like approximately, how many miles does it have on it?
That's one of our busier trucks. It was in, it's downtown, so now it's out of Station 6. Lieutenant Brown, do you know approximately how many? I want to say in the 80,000 range, but I'm not 100% sure on that.
Yeah, it might be, it might be in the mid to upper 80s.
Well, and actually, the miles aren't as important as the, the hours and the beating to death of the pump.
And I'll be honest, that engine, that engine, that motor, since it's an ILS 9, they had quite a bit of problems. That motor has been rebuilt at least once, if not halfway rebuilt. It's, they called dusting, like it sucked in some bad stuff and floated a valve. And so we've had a little bit of problems with little gremlins, as I like to call it. So it's, you know, knock on wood, the last three years, we haven't had any major issues with it. But about four to five years ago, we had significant issues with it.
So it's not the mileage, any decision? It's more the?
It's more the years and the mileage altogether. What we've tend to do here at Benita, each department is a little bit different. I know Astero does 10 years on the line and two or three in reserve. Our past practice has been 12 years on the line, two or three in reserve. So, and again, depending on, let's use the old ladder 25. We were having significant problems with it, so we decided to replace it two years early. So it depends on what we're going with. So that's the rule of thumb right now. You're welcome.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We need a motion to approve the reselection of Bradley Brown to the firefighters' pension system board.
So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, chief, you're up.
All right, just a few things, just to keep you guys apprised of the situation here at the fire department. Just so you guys all know, Toys for Tots has already started. We've already put out boxes. We've already started collecting toys. If you look behind you in that room, there's already started, our collection's already there. Thus the reason why we're having the meeting about two weeks early is, is the reason for that. Starting on Friday, this room will be turned into our toy store. So keep you apprised of that. We will start on December the 13th. The week of the 13th through the 17th, we'll be distributing toys. Families will be coming in here, picking out the toys that they, they get. Then on, starting about December 22nd, we'll be giving away bicycles. That's going to last, you know, however long we have bicycles. So if we have 50 bikes, it's going to last a couple of days. If we have 100 bikes, it may last a little bit longer than that. But I do, I would be remiss if I didn't throw a shout out to the Benita Springs Assistance Office. They're our partners in this. Anybody who wanted Toys for Tots had to go to Benita Assistance Office, fill out the proper forms, and the Benita Assistance Office did vet them. So this isn't just, you know, somebody walking around off the streets that are vetted there in need of them. So, and then we'll see them all on the 13th. The next thing I have is kind of dovetailing on what Commissioner Murphy said. Again, holiday in the park, December 7th. We'll have a presence there. We'll have our first aid tent. We'll have trucks there. We'll have our giveaways. We'll have our stuff out there. We'll have our name out there. So we'll have some guys out there in the Kubota running safely.
You're going to help light the tree?
Uh, yeah.
Who's going to do that?
It's going to be the city council and whoever else wants to be up there.
Okay, I thought it was the sheriff and the fire department we're going to.
I haven't heard that from Laura. I'll check with.
We've always done it with the council.
Yeah, well, that, that's what it said in the newspaper, though, that it would be the sheriff and the fire department.
Yeah, yeah. In the past, I know it's been with the cap.
It's a city event. Usually, you're in charge of it.
But, but again, as, as partners with the city, I know we'll be invited up on the stage and giveaway stuff. I'll confirm that with Laura Taylor and the city and Nicole. And get back to you guys this week.
I think Nicole already sent something out to us about it.
I haven't been getting any messages.
So I'll confirm it and get it out either in a text or face-to-face, give you a call.
Thank you.
The other holiday party that's coming up is the, our holiday event is the Chamber of Commerce Holiday Event. It is December the 16th at Spring Run from 5:00 to 8:00. And again, space is limited based on the seating. If anybody wants to go, please get ahold of Anna Maria as soon as possible and let them know. If your spouses would like to go, they have to pay for it unless your spouse is a member of the chamber and they go through their business or their, their club or whatever. But it's $75. But we're more than happy to register them. We just need to know that in advance and then we'll collect the.
Do you want to get a head count? Now, who's going to go?
Are you going?
Yep.
Can I tell you the next?
That's fine.
Yeah, just to let Anna Marino.
Okay.
Um.
Not me.
You're not going?
My daughter will be here for the last day that day.
Okay. I'm in. My wife's a member, so.
Yeah, that's. So, yeah, just if, for those of you, we'll let Vice Chairman Casilla know and when he gets back. And then just let Anna Marino. The next, it'd be right around the same time that we have our next meeting, but I just want to put it out there. January 13th is a, is the business after hours. It's the rescheduling of the one that they had for last month. It got rained out down in Tin City. So again, if you want to go to it, let Anna Marino.
If anybody wants to go out on a boat at night, this time of the year in Naples is nuts.
Just so, just to bring you aware of it, if you're around here, on December the 15th, Lee County SO will be doing a drone class out back using our field and a tower for a little drone class they're putting on. So.
When is that?
December the 15th.
What time?
Uh, they didn't say. They just said during the day. So they'll have their drones out here, a couple of them. I don't think there'll be any firepower on it.
By, by the way, I think Larry Casilla did say he wanted to go on that boat trip the last.
He, he did on the last one. I will confirm with him. We'll have a little bit of time.
He's on a boat trip now?
He was registered on the boat trip the last time.
He's on a cruise.
So, uh, the next thing on my list is, just for your information, engine 28 blew a transmission. Wouldn't go into gear. We had to get it towed to Allison. Basically, we're looking at about a $10,000 repair to have a new rebuilt, a remanufactured with a warranty transmission put in it. So it's up there right now being repaired.
Do they have insurance or something like that?
No. No. It's, if it was in an accident or something like that, but the insurance doesn't cover mechanical breakage or anything like that. The last thing on my list, and I apologize, it's Commissioner Murphy because he doesn't really know anything about it because I sent it out on email on Monday. Let me hand this up to you guys real quick.
Sure.
And I just got these today, that's why.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you.
So basically, um. So what it is, is you got, the board knows that, again, when we were doing the budgeting process, we budgeted to replace the light rescues that we have. We've been looking at it. We've been calling people. We've been calling our partners at the state. We've been calling different manufacturers. We've talked to 10-8. All of them say, hey, if you can get a chassis, we'll build you a rescue. We can't get a chassis because of the chip shortage. When I called Gerber or I've even talked to Rick Hendrick, who gets from all over the United States, they basically say, we don't know when we can get it. If you want to pay retail, sure, we can get you something retail. But, you know, under state bid contract, we can't get anything like that. And the difference between the two is, let's use my Tahoe, the one that I have. We paid $32,000 for it. Retail is 50-something. So it's not quite double. So we get quite a discount. So with that being said, we, I reached out to Fouts Brothers, who built the last light rescues that we had. They currently aren't building light rescues because there's not a calling for it. There's not, they can't make the money on it, basically. So they're building these mini pumppers like we have at Station 7. They have one on that's getting ready to come off the line. It's considered a demo unit because it's not specifically built for somebody. They were going to use it as a stock unit, take around, say, hey, do you want to buy one of these? So that one is coming off the line the middle of December. We are able to purchase that and take delivery of it by the middle to end of December. The price on it is 239, I got a quote of $239,000. That's with us picking it up. I've talked to a couple of members of the board. We're going to get another quote on to have, see how much it is to deliver. If it's reasonable, we'll put that into the price. But with that being said, we only budgeted $160. If you recalled, we only budgeted 600 for, for the new engine. So we have approximately 1.180 million in the depreciation reserve fund. So what I'd like to do is purchase this, purchase this mini pumper for a rescue and/or for a replacement of Station 27 because Station 27 has the same style truck. If something happens at Station 7 where that truck goes out of service, we cannot put a full-size engine down there. It just won't fit. So this will serve two, two purposes. So what my proposal is to buy, get a consensus and buy this one before it's gone. And then the money that we're short on both trucks, take it out of the depreciation. I will bring it back next month in January's board meeting for the budget transfer on that. 239,000.
Well, what makes total sense over the rescue is this has pump capabilities as well as just being a, a rescue unit. The difference in price plus the availability, being able to get it now versus having, God knows when we're going to get the one that we need. And, and we have the money.
I'll, I'll make the motion that we do that and we take it from that fund.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that, that'll get that ball rolling because I think what the, the chief and I had a discussion and the guy told him, you don't buy it, I'll sell it. It's going to be gone before it rolls off the line. So it's, you know, the.
And that's just not a sales tactic.
No, it isn't. Because right now, it's like, if you need it, you can't get it. So we're going to be, I don't want to get in a bidding war over it.
No, and, you know, there's no guarantee that they're going to get any more chassis to build any more of these demo, demo units.
Can you use one of the current chassis to rebuild a new?
No, because it's not the cha, it's not the box that is wrong with, with Rescue 21, our little light rescues. It's the chassis, you know, the mo, it's got, oh heck, I think the re, we've got two of them that are the same. The one that runs out of Station 1, we pretty much ran it to death and now it's in reserve. And the one that was in reserve, we pulled out of reserve and switched them. I think the one in reserve, Rescue 29 has in the neighborhood of 112,000 miles on it. And they're both O5s, O8s, O8s.
To highlight how desperate the chief was, he even agreed to get a Dodge.
Yeah.
And he couldn't get one.
Yeah. When I, in all seriousness, when I called our manufacturer or our salesman up at Garber Fleet up in Jacksonville, they sell Dodge, Chevy, and Ford. I said, I'll even take a Dodge if you, if you can find me one. And this is how bad it is, is that anybody that's, they have canceled taking orders on 21s and they're not even accepting orders for 22s. And with the Fouts Brother one, if, if they, if it's not, if they don't have a PO for a fire department, they're not getting the unit. So.
Wow. Well, we're lucky to get this one.
So, yes.
How does this compare to 27?
It's, it's pretty much an exact mirror of it. And I will tell you that in 2016, we paid $191,000 for that one. So in five years, you know, I don't think.
It was a different, it was a different market then.
It was a different market. But it's still, even with that, just vehicle prices going up, I don't think that's a bad inflation when we know that the Pierce fire truck goes up anywhere from 3% to 5% every year.
Right.
Yeah. And now with tack two years of COVID and supply chains and chips.